Hereby I call the May 12th School Board Meeting to order. Member Campbell, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Member Hanson, would you please read the Board Mission Statement?
Our mission is to ensure that all students are prepared for college and a successful life academically, socially, and emotionally, as well as equipped with the necessary tools to have options and make decisions about their long-term goals. This will be accomplished by believing and working towards all students learning through rigorous curricula and meaningful, effective instruction, consequently demonstrating mastery on high-quality assessments with all stakeholders being held accountable throughout the process.
Thank you. President Quigley is away at work. Member Vinegas is absent and member Felice is at a funeral. Agenda approval and revisions. Dr. Mitchum.
Yes, Mr. Vice President, I'd like to ask that the Board approve revising the agenda. Adding Agenda Item 6.6, Valley View Educational Enrichment Foundation 2014-2015 Grant Awards. Adding this item to the agenda for approval will allow grant recipients to obtain their materials during summer break and be prepared to begin their programs at the start of the school year. Then I ask that the Board approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Socora?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Treasurer's Report.
Assistant Superintendent Grisoffe. The Treasurer's Monthly Report for April includes the usual schedule of reports, financial reports, balance sheets, and summary of revenues and expenditures, as well as the interim obligation payments for April 2014 totaling $3,119,585.33 for your consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Excuse me. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Socora?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
And Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Mr. Grisoffe.
Action Report, Treasurer's Action Report 5.2 is the schedule of bills for May 2014. We have five funds listed out there totaling $2,354,866.75 for your action.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Socora?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Treasurer's Report 5.3 is the summary of investments for April 2014. 5.4 is the state funding update. You'll notice there's only two entries on there. The state is currently caught up with their funding. The early report is that we will not receive any additional funding before the end of the current fiscal year, so we can expect that report to grow as time marches on. And then Treasurer's Report 5.5 is the all schools trust account activity for March 2014. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Thank you, sir. Consent Agenda. Dr. Mitchum.
Yes. I ask that the Board approve Consent Agenda Items 6.1 through 6.6. 6.1 Approval of Board Meeting Minutes 4:28:14. 6.2 Executive Session Meeting Minutes 4:28:14. 6.3 Illinois High School Association Membership Renewal for 2014-2015. 6.4 Recommendation to Extend Related Services Contract with Easter Seals, the Joliet Region Incorporated, and 6.5 Gifts for Bolingbrook High School and 6.6 Valley View Enrichment Foundation 2014-2015 Grant Awards.
I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Socora?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes. Student and Staff Recognition.
Dr. Mitchum.
Yes, for our Pillars of Valley View. First up is Bolingbrook High School with Principal Yolanda Jordan.
Good evening, Vice President Goojus, School Board Members, Dr. Mitchum, Senior Leadership and VVSD community. Holly Grenup has distinguished herself as an example of what a 21st-century educator should be. Holly is currently finishing her 13th year as a social studies instructor at Bolingbrook High School, which makes her the longest-tenured social studies teacher in the building. Holly graduated from BHS in 1997 and attended Illinois State University, earning an undergraduate degree in secondary education with a history concentration. After graduating from ISU in 2001, Holly quickly engulfed herself into the BHS student body by coaching girls volleyball for three years and girls soccer for six years. During this time, Holly received her Master's in Curriculum Instruction from St. Xavier. Holly is currently spearheading curriculum adjustments to align with the Common Core initiatives and serves as a Muslim Student Association sponsor. Holly and her husband Joe enjoy spending time with their two beautiful children, Madeline and Veronica, and look forward to the next annual trek down south to Disney World. Bolingbrook High School is pleased and proud to present Holly as a pillar of Valley View for her service and dedication to the community and the students. Please join me in celebrating Holly.
Next, we have Irene King Elementary School. Principal April Vassik.
Good evening, School Board Members, Senior Leadership, and Valley View Community. It is with great honor that we recommend Debbie Warren as our stellar instructional aide at Irene King. Debbie works with students in grades K through 5 on a daily basis. She also supports some of our neediest learners in intervention groups. These students look forward to their time with Mrs. Warren even though the work is often difficult. The students truly appreciate Mrs. Warren's warm and caring nature. Mrs. Warren also takes a lead role in our safety of our students by facilitating our arrival and dismissal procedures. Debbie always greets students, staff, and families with a smile and is up for any challenge. Debbie is one of the reasons why Irene King is such a special place. Thank you, Debbie, for all that you do and the success of our students.
Next up from Jonas Sock Elementary School, Principal Michelle Romo.
Good evening, Board Members, Senior Leadership, and Audience Members. It is a pleasure to honor Mrs. Inez Flores at the Sock Pillar. Inez Flores is a bilingual instructional aide assigned to work in a bilingual kindergarten classroom in the morning and a bilingual second-grade classroom in the afternoon at Jonas Sock. In her first year at Sock, she has been called on numerous times to help cover other teaching assignments when we're short-staffed. Whenever we ask her to help out, Inez has always done so with a smile on her face and a positive attitude. Inez has tutored students after school as part of the SES tutoring program that began in January and just ended in April. She has built a wonderful rapport with the students and staff at Sock. She is a role model to our students and a collaborative colleague to our peers. Ms. Flores demonstrates daily what it means to be a pillar of Valley View. Inez, we thank you for all that you do. You know, I always have a last word. This could be my last word. And so, you know, we have flowers for Inez because she is just one of the most lovely people. We also got her a Starbucks card, but I'm going to tell you, I don't really even think she'll have a chance to have a Starbucks drinks because, you know, when we assign her to all these different jobs, sometimes she'll say to me, "Do I get to eat? Is there time for lunch?" And just always puts her best foot forward, so we thank her very much.
And finally, representing the print shop, Mr. Gary Grisoffe for our last pillar of Valley View for the night.
Good evening, everyone. Dan Strodmann, to my left, has ink in his blood. That's why it won't be easy when the retiring Valley View District 365 Director of Print Shop Operations leaves his office for the last time in just over a month. Strodmann has been around printing operations since he was 12-years-old, getting a jump on what would be his future career, helping a neighbor operate an old letterpress in his garage. When he enrolled as a young 14-year-old sophomore at Joliet East High School, he entered the school district's work-study program, putting in four hours a day in the district print shop at Joliet Central during the school year and working eight hours a day during the summer. Upon graduation, he was hired to work full-time in the District 204 Print Shop, a position he held for more than a year before accepting a job on the four-man press team of Lockport-based Georgia Pacific. A year later, he arrived in Valley View. Despite limited typesetting capabilities and without any types of computers, Strodmann and his assistant churned out roughly 5 million impressions a year in the late 1970s. Today, the print shop handles 60 million impressions and employs six full-time and two part-time staff, maintaining a web-based order submission site and managing the district's fleet of 51 multifunction copier printers. During an average student attendance day, the print shop will run 400 jobs and use over 2,000 pounds of paper comprising over 90,000 separate jobs. Strodmann is proud of the fact that the print shop has been able to stay on the cutting edge of technology, including such innovations as web-to-print via email, long before email was in vogue. High on Dan's list of innovations is the use of a variable data software so report cards and other mailings can be personalized to each individual student or household. Dan's dedication to the job never changed. Under his leadership, the print shop team has always answered the bell, no matter the circumstance, no matter how busy they were. Forever modest, Dan credits his staff with that success. But at the very top of his pride and joy list is centralizing the school district's copying operations, which has saved Valley View millions of dollars and countless hours of classroom instructional time. If I may, I'd like to deviate off script just a bit and ask a couple other members of the print shop to join me here at the podium. Mitzi Boyd isn't here with us today, but Mitzi's also retiring in June after 22 years of service with the Valley View Print Operations. Colleen Fox is also retiring after 21-year career with Valley View, 16 at the print shop. And not to be left behind is Dan's wife Linda, who has served for 14 years at the Transportation Department, also retiring in June. And so I have to believe that this team is part of what has certainly made Dan a success. And there's no doubt about that. It all takes place under your leadership, Dan, and for the past 34 years, we appreciate all that you have contributed to the success of our operation. And it's for that reason I am proud to honor you and your staff and recognize you as true pillars of Valley View. Congratulations.
Next, here to present the AAA Patrol of the Year, the President of the AAA, Brad Raiber.
Good evening. I'm Brad Raiber, President of AAA Chicago. I want to thank the School Board for giving us a little time tonight to make this very special presentation for two of your elementary students. Since 1920, we have run the AAA School Safety Patrol Program, and we're really proud that this program not only teaches our young children about traffic safety, but it also develops them into responsible, hard-working leaders in their schools and hopefully in life. Each year, we recognize just one student from each state in the country who exemplifies these qualifications. I'm very proud this year to recognize Kate Katuskas from Irene King Elementary as our 2014 Illinois Patroller of the Year. One of the pieces of this is that each of the patrollers that want to get considered for patrolling or need to write an essay, and her essay talked about the difficult choices she's been presented with and how she wants to lead a life full of good choices. Being a AAA Safety Patroller has certainly helped. We can see from her schoolwork, the activities she's been involved in, and her character that she's on her way to being the strong, responsible, young leader that we would all like her to be. Congratulations, Kate, for this well-earned honor. We received this year, like most years, a tremendous number of nominations, and many of them are wonderful, some of the very best. And while Kate stood out, we were also quite taken with that of Jerus Harlan from John Tibbet Elementary. We've never done this before, but his essay was so good that we're recognizing him as our runner-up this year. We can tell from Jerus's essay that he cares a great deal about being a patroller, and not only has that helped him in school, but in all aspects of his life. It also helped him to get along better with his sister, which has us thinking that we may need to implement a safety program for the home for next year. Jerus, we think very highly of you as well, and we wish you the most congratulations. So thank you to the teachers, to the school and the district who are running this program. We appreciate it, AAA, the time and effort you take with these great kids, and we hope it continues for many years to come. Thank you very much.
Next up from Jane Adams Middle School, we have the Illinois Elementary School Association State Wrestling Qualifiers with Principal Jason Paskovich.
Sorry for the delay. Good evening, Jason Paskovich, Principal at Jane Adams Middle School, Senior Leadership, Board of Education, Dr. Mitchum, community. Today, I present to you Art Tansel, Coach of our wrestling team.
Thank you, Dr. Paskovich, and good evening, School Board Members and Senior Leadership and the community. We had the opportunity this year, I had the opportunity to work with Coach Michael Baggett, who's at LuKanZik, but he moonlighted over Jane Adams for us as wrestling coach, and we had a great season. All the kids did really great, but particularly two in particular did well, Colin Wilson and Omari Holiday. Gentlemen, if you could step up here real quick. Both of these gentlemen started in sixth grade, started out wrestling, having no experience prior, and worked their tails off the entire three years and came to fruition this year when they both made state. Outside of sports, they're both good academically speaking. Colin is in honors program, and there's no academic challenge that Omari doesn't step up to meet. In addition, Colin plays in the band, has had a lot of success with that. They're both great individuals, can't say nothing but great things about them. Gentlemen, it's been a pleasure. I hope that you do well in high school and beyond, and congratulations. So here you go.
Next up, Assistant Principal Jacob Buck from John J. LuKanZik Middle School.
Good evening, Dr. Mitchum, Members of the Board, Members of the community. It's my privilege to stand here this evening and recognize these six outstanding young men for their accomplishments on the wrestling mat this season. Their accomplishments on the mat would not have been possible without the support of their coaches, Coach Earl Brooks and Brian Simic, who's here this evening straight from a track meet, I believe, as well as our Athletic Director, Chris McVeigh, who's back there as well. These guys put in countless hours helping our students learn the skills they need to be successful on the wrestling mat, as well as in the classroom and in life, and they really embody everything that it means to truly be a student athlete. So with that said, I will turn this over to Coach Earl Brooks to recognize these outstanding young men.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's always a privilege whenever I get a chance to talk about the students, especially my wrestlers. As Principal Buck said, the most important thing is, and what we recognize, is student first, and he didn't want to mention it, but about the LuKanZik wrestlers, you know, regarding their GPA, I think it was amongst the highest, somewhere like 4.8, I believe, 3.8 somewhere in there. So with that said, we recognize the student first, and it gives me great pleasure to recognize the students that we have recognizing, that we're recognizing today. And the first one at the 90-pound weight class, I would like to recognize River Kowal. River is a third-year wrestler, in fact, first in regionals, first in sectionals, and state qualifier. Ezeo Martinez. Ezeo is a, oh, 100-year wrestler. First in regionals, first in sectional, he was one match off of making it to the state finals. Jimmy McDonald, he's not here today, as well as Carlos Copentero. They both represented the team well downstate as well. At 167, first in regionals, first in sectional, third in the state, he was one of the ones that got the state medal this year, Andres Jarra. And last but not least, our anchor, we call him, 275. One of the things I'd like to recognize is, there were four words, in fact, I'd like to recognize regarding all of the wrestlers, and that is dedication, tenacity, balance, and patience. And I use the word patience very, very distinctly because Glenn Armstrong, it requires you have to get at least placed in the top four to get to the sectionals, the top three to get to state. He got fourth in sectionals and second, I'm sorry, fourth in regionals, second in sectionals, and made it downstate, Glenn Armstrong. Thank you very much. Coach Simic and I, as well as Bob Israelson, we really enjoy coaching the kids, and we look forward to next year. Thank you.
Next we have from Brooks Middle School, Dr. Keith Wood.
Good evening to the Board of Education, Senior Leadership, our school community. Keith Wood, Principal of Brooks Middle School. It's always a pleasure to recognize our student athletes. And to tell us a little bit more about our young gentleman who will be recognized tonight, our Dean and Wrestling Coach, Mr. Mike Agler.
Good evening. You know, I feel very blessed here to give a certificate of achievement to my boys Cameron Hargrove and George Fernandez. They are both first-year wrestlers. Cameron is a sixth grader. Actually, I heard a lot about him during the sixth-grade year. Had a few conversations with him, with his parents, and then he came out, had a great season. He's very intense at practice, the type of student athlete that other students want to be like. I'm very excited to have him two more years on the team. He only had one loss during the regular season, so that's definitely an achievement. Cameron Hargrove? All right. Next up, I have George Fernandez. George, this was his first year wrestling with me, although he is an eighth grader. He's a great basketball player. He was actually on the basketball team, did a phenomenal job there, decided that he wanted to keep being a leader, came out to wrestling, and immediately, you know, towards the end of the season, he comes out and he could already be, he was already someone that was a leader on the team. Again, other students, all their athletes wanted to be like him, to practice with his intensity. He came out, unfortunately, he had an injury, so with the little short time that we had, and to be able to have that little practice and get him to state, I think is a huge achievement on his part, and definitely shows the hard work and dedication that he does have. I hope he continues to wrestle. I know he's fantastic at football, and another great student athlete, and it was definitely an honor coaching him this year. George?
Representing Hubert H. Humphrey Middle School, Assistant Principal Lisa Allen.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce this evening the Humphrey Wrestling Coach, who is closing out an eight-year career with the Warrior Wrestling Team, Mr. Jake Arnt.
Thank you, Lisa. To the distinguished board, I want to make sure I recognize Sean Carrier tonight. He was our 119 for the season. Came to us last year as a seventh grader. He had no experience whatsoever. He was one of our most improved wrestlers in the last two years. This year, he was a state qualifier. He made it through regional sectionals and made it to state, you know, but unfortunately, he didn't place at state, but he gave it his all, you know. He's one of these real hard-working students, not only on the mats, but also in classes. But Lisa, would you give this to Sean in school tomorrow? Now, I'd like to mention about our bus driver, as we call them most schools would go to. They'd say, "Who's this guy?" You know, we'd always tell them, "That's our bus driver," because that's the only way you could describe to Sean. Another, he is another hard-working young man. In sixth grade, he came to us, he just missed going to state, he earned his last match at sectionals. At seventh grade, I told you he'd be back here this year. He was state qualifier last year, and by golly, he didn't keep himself coming back. This year, he... He, this year, he wrestled at state, he placed third, which is a pretty good accomplishment, you know, for a middle school student, you know, that's, you know, really working. He came into our, into us this year in about the middle of the season, due to some, you know, unforeseen things on, you know, that, on his end, personal family problems, but that all worked out to where he was able to come back and do his good. Not only did he do what's good, but he did himself good, he did Humphrey good, and he did the district good. Deshawn, would you come up here, please?
Again, from Bolingbrook High School, Principal Yolanda Jordan, for the ACO National Qualifiers. ACO stands for Academic Cultural Technological and Scientific Olympics. Excuse me, we have Mrs. Pam Pritchard.
Thank you.
English teacher from Bolingbrook.
Good evening, everyone, sorry. Again, my name is Pam Pritchard, and I teach English at Bolingbrook High School, and I'm the ACO sponsor for the high school, as well as the Humanities Enrichment Facilitator for NAACP DuPage County. DuPage County ACO also serves Kane, Kendall, and Will Counties, and has been going strong now for 35 years. ACO, which stands for, as Dr. Mitchum said, Afro-Academic Cultural Technological Scientific Olympics, is NAACP's youth initiative, and you'll find an ACO chapter all over the United States at high schools all over the United States. This year, at the annual ACO competition held at the College of DuPage, the following Valley View students were awarded medals. Jordan Henderson won the silver medal in filmmaking. Devonte Sanders won the silver medal in oratory and honorable mention in poetry. Achawa Achiri from Romeoville High School won a bronze medal in engineering, and participated also in our ACO STEM program with mentoring and research, which is being sponsored by Argon National. This year, Valley View School District has ACO gold medalist Jordan Henderson, let's show him some love, please. This year, Jordan Henderson won the gold medal for dramatics and the silver medal in filmmaking. In the fall, Jordan will attend the University of Illinois at Champaign-Urbana, where he's going to major in journalism. And Malcolm, Malcolm Smith, won the gold medal this year for music vocal classical, maybe we show him some love as well. And Malcolm will also be attending the University of Illinois at Champaign-Urbana and majoring in kinesiology on a pre-physical therapy track. And again, we have Devonte Sanders, who you will see again, who again, won the silver medal in oratory, as well as honorable mention in poetry. One more time, please. Lastly, I'd like to share that they competed against 55 other students from 28 different high schools, and all gold medalists will go on to compete at the national level, which will be held in Las Vegas this July. And I just want to share very quickly, it is such a beautiful thing to witness, five to 900 African-American students, high school students, coming from all over the United States to compete in strictly academics. So, one last time, show them some love.
Mrs. Pritchard?
Yes, sir.
Can you explain to the community which school dominates ACO in terms of its participants and medal winners each year, and who's always being chased?
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that. Bolingbrook, and Dr. Mitchum is correct, Bolingbrook has had the most students participate in ACO, when you consider all the high schools that are involved, for the last, I'm, and I'm guessing, because we've been part of this, five years that we have participated, we had more students participate in ACO than any of the other high schools.
Eight years.
So, thank you for bringing that up. Yes, sir, what other?
Eight years.
Oh, sorry. Eight years, eight years, okay. Very good.
Finally, from Bolingbrook High School, the Math League State Qualifiers.
Good evening, my name is Julia Aden, head math team coach at Bolingbrook High School. This year, we had an extremely successful year, not only were we the SWSC Conference Champions, but we also had 14 of our students qualify to go to state competition at University of Illinois last weekend. And of those 14, six of them are freshmen, so I think that's a pretty amazing accomplishment as a freshman student. So, if you would please recognize them, Giselle Cruz. Andrew Fanor. Edward Owusu. And two of our seniors are here tonight, first of all, Trevor Goldman. And we saved Brian Parrow for last, this is his third year qualifying for state with math team, and he qualified in not only one area, but two areas, so excellent work.
Do we, we have, do we have one more? The IHSA State Drama Competition Qualifiers from Bolingbrook High School?
Stand right there. Sorry, second. Okay, all right. Good evening, school board members, and senior leadership, and parents, and the students in the community. My name is Donna Frankstapley, I am a finance teacher at Bolingbrook High School, I also coached drama, who also made it to state, hello again, and our speech program here at Bolingbrook High School. Today, I am here to honor the students that participated in the IHSA State Drama and Group Interpretations Competition. Before I bring the students up, though, I would like to say that since 2007, our school has been participating in the IHSA State Series Competition, entering sectionals, and participating in our conference each year. And if you don't, if you haven't read the articles, because we've been in the paper, about our program, Drama Group Interpretation, Drama in particular, is a one-hour competition where the students have to unload scenery, props, walls, they have to be in costume, they have to unload all of their scenery onto a stage, perform their show, and take it all off the set in one hour. So, what they do is amazing, it's not, you know, just one of those, you know, we're not, it's not a spring musical, or like a fall play where everything's kind of already set in place, the kids are in motion constantly, and every second counts. And after what we do with them throughout the week, and practicing and preparing them, the directors and myself, we're not allowed to touch any lighting or sound, any equipment, we start our stopwatch and say go, and everything else is up to the students. So, I congratulate them for being, you know, diligent in their activities this year, and, you know, going forth and advancing the state. Also, I brought their, they participated in our SWSC Conference, and we're in a very competitive conference, and there's three judges that judge their performance. And of the three judges, and all of the teams that were competing, our students received all three superior rankings from the judges. So, I brought their plaque tonight, so they can take a picture with their plaque, it's And I just put forth in motion, this program, I've been volunteering since 2007, doing this activity, it's not in our contract, there is no stipend for contest play group interpretation. I've been doing it out of the kindness of my heart, and because I've participated in drama group interpretation when I was in high school, and I think it's a great experience for our students to be directors, and actors, and lighting technician, they get to do it all. And so, when you all see the literature come across, if you all see it, just know, I am putting it in motion that this do become a, you know, a recognized activity in our school contract. Having said that, this year, we had the opportunity to work with a gentleman from one of our schools in our conference, who is a retired drama and theater teacher, and I would like to bring him up, because he was the director of our school's production of Of Mice and Men, Mike Zagrosi. Would you come up, please? Do you want to say something?
I just want to thank the board and the administration for the opportunity to take part in this activity I directed at Joliet for 35 years, and I have to say that the kids that I met at Bolingbrook this year are amazing. They are some of the finest students in the state, and you should be proud of that. And I thank you for the opportunity, and hope we can do it again.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and call some names. This past season, the Boling, this is what I typed, this past season, the Bolingbrook High School production of Of Mice and Men qualified and advanced to the IHSA State Final. The cast and crew of this show made history. So, if you all didn't know, this program started in 1941, there's never in the history of drama group interpretation been a production from Bolingbrook High School or Romeoville High School to ever represent us at state finals, so they made history this year. And I brought books for you guys to have. There's four, sorry, I'll take that. There's four, we're on page 16. And you guys get to keep those. There's four, sorry. Okay, so without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and bring these students up. But I did say, I'm very proud and thankful to be a part of a competitive activities here at Bolingbrook High School. Thank you for allowing us to participate. Let's see.
You're on 17, you're on page 17.
Oh, my bad. All right. Greg Chulo, who was George. Did y'all turn my mic off? No, they didn't. Okay, Nick Jacobs, senior, Nick Jacobs, he was Lenny. Brendan Furlong, are you Candy? Eric Page played Curly. Devon Richardson, I'm sorry, yes, Devon Richardson. He's the student director, he directed all the sound. It's out of order. Gabriela Galahos was the lady in the show who, Curly's wife, she got strangled and died, she did a good job. Devonte Sanders was Crooks. Jasmine Tyler, these ladies right here were part of the stage crew, so they were lifting furniture and doing all sorts of walls and holding stuff, and it was amazing. This was a part of our stage crew. Jasmine Tyler. Bailey Jarvis Taylor. There's some people that aren't here, so I'm going to skip through that. Dania Harris. Jennifer Lucasey. And Marissa Vargas. There's about four other students who are not here today. Thank you, guys.
For those of you here for student and staff recognition, we understand you have a busy schedule of students, you have class tomorrow. If you wish to leave at this time, you may feel free to do so.
Board Liaison Reports, any and all?
Yes, I have a couple. We met with the tech, and you actually will be getting a report shortly on the agenda, so I won't say too much there. We also met, the Challenge Committee meeting, Matt, continuing to assess improvements needed in the challenge program, looking at the parents' input and survey, and we will have a report coming soon on all of their findings and things that are going on there. And finally, our Fans Committee launched, our fans this month, and on the website, we have the Fans Hot Button, which is live, and you can access, I believe, the show that we did with some community members, and some of our principal and deans that were a part of that. We did Bridging the Gap with Levery Brown hosting that, as well as we have flyers out, we've got them with all the information on that, so I'm really excited over us relaunching the fans, and we're pushing towards getting as many people to the training dates as we come towards the end of the school year, May 23, as well as June 20, 6:00 PM here at the Ad Center.
Any other reports? Audience participation, stakeholders, as individuals or groups may present their views to the board at this time, please come to the mic.
Alonso Walker, member of the community. First and foremost, I want to make some observations about some of the things stated at the last board meeting regarding diversity. Before I do that, though, I'd like to commend whoever set the agenda, Francis Ford Cocla would have really been, really been impressed at how things were orchestrated, so that the perception is that diversity is alive and well. Contrary to that, that is not the case, and I like to think some of that had to do with my concerns that I've stated on numerous occasions. It was once said that by a noted American, if you don't help with the solution, you're part of the problem. And as an example of that, most times when you look at a pyramid, you see the pinnacle of the pyramid, very small area, what you fail to see a lot of times is the base of that pyramid, where the masses are congregated that didn't achieve to that level. And what we saw today was a well-run pyramid, because the numbers that are indicative of the school system in terms of minorities are still at the base, no matter what you may have seen here today, that is definitely not the case. And I would like to see some kind of program developed that would infuse more of these minorities into the teaching and administrative ranks. I have yet to hear a constructive plan, how this is to be achieved from HR, anybody on the D S right now. And these young kids, minority descent, deserve to see someone who looks like them in greater numbers representative of this community, and it hasn't been done. What we saw was a nice little three-card molly, Monte today, but it isn't what it should be.
I guess I would just, I have to say that I take issue that we would use children as the three-card Monte. Those children were scheduled to come here tonight, they're well-deserving, and that wasn't done on your behest. We're good, we're good.
Let me clarify something here. The young men and young ladies that you saw here tonight, detailing their academic, athletic achievement are well-worthy of what they received. Don't misunderstand me, it's not a condemnation of them. It's an observation of people who sit up on the D.I.S. and claim they didn't know anything about the disparities in the ranks of minorities teachers. That's a completely different issue you raised. I have never made a negative comment about the young men and young ladies who strive so hard to succeed to make us all proud of them. Don't confuse the issue.
Action reports, Dr. Mitchell.
Yes, Mr. Vice President. I'd ask that the board approve Student Due Process Cases A through G as presented.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Gouges?
Yes. Action reports, Assistant Superintendent for Education, Mrs. Kinder.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Gouges. Action Report eleven point one, we are seeking your approval for updates to advanced placement physics. Information regarding these changes was presented on four twenty-eight. The changes that we are presenting are in accordance with the guidelines set forth by the A.P. College Board. This includes course name changes, updates in the curricular framework, and the adoption of an updated textbook for one of the courses, which is A.P. Physics Two.
Motion?
Some move.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Gouges?
Yes. Action reports, Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services, Mr. Grisoffe.
Got two action reports for this evening. Twelve point one is a recommendation to accept the low bid for the B.J. Ward main entrance site improvement. Base bid received from Lindblad Construction of Joliet, and the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars represents the low qualified bidder. This project will allow for an ADA accessible ramp at B.J. Ward in the front, in the main entrance, along with improving sight lines, as well as installation of new light poles, and low-profile landscaping to provide a more pedestrian-friendly and more secure environment than we currently have there. We also, back in May, I believe, took advantage of a state maintenance grant application, which we were fortunate enough to receive, and the amount of fifty thousand dollars to help offset the cost of this project. So at this time, we are recommending approve that base bid contract. We are not exercising either of the alternates for landscaping, that's something we'll do in-house. But we are, again, recommending the base bid contract for improvements to B.J. Ward to Lindblad Construction in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars.
Motion?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Gouges?
Yes, Mr. Grisoffe.
Action Report twelve-two is a resolution to approve a plot easement to the village of Romeoville. As you're probably very likely aware, there's a large construction project going on in the front of Romeoville High School at fifty-three, and Hanson Material Services allowing for a full interchange there, a lighted interchange, to give us a new access point to the campus of Romeoville High. As the construction has proceeded, the village had found, along with its contractor, a twenty-inch force main that was not as deep as it was to the south of the construction. And therefore, it was right in direct conflict with the roadway that was being poured. They approached us requesting a fifteen-foot easement adjacent to the Illinois fifty-three right away. And so, we see no reason not to grant that easement at this time. It's less than an acre of property, it's really just green space for us. And we just made sure that we had the ability to install any future improvements as we see fit, signage, electrical, lighting, things of that nature. And so, we did review this with the village, we also reviewed it with the legal counsel, and all is in order here. So we are, at this point, approving, recommending approval of the plot easement, Resolution number fourteen eighty-three.
Motion?
Some move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Gouges?
Yes. Executive Director for Human Resources, Mrs. Hawkes.
Thank you, Vice President Gouges. This evening, my first action report is thirteen point one, Consolidated Action Report for Certified and Classified Personnel. We're seeking your approval on thirty-nine items for certified, fifty-seven for classified personnel, one for administrative classified personnel, and five for administrative certified personnel.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Gouges?
Yes.
Before I move on to my next action report, in the action report that was just approved by the board, there was an appointment of a new student services administrator, Mary Worster. Mary, if you would just stand, we'd like to recognize you. Mary has over eight years in the district as a school psychologist. She's been on numerous committees and had leadership roles. And we're excited that she's been appointed tonight to student services. Congratulations, Mary. My second action report tonight is thirteen point two, Resolution Number fourteen eighty-four, authorizing dismissal of educational support personnel employees for reasons other than reduction in force.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Gouges?
Yes. Superintendent Information Reports, Dr. Mitchell.
I have an information report this evening.
Mrs. Kinder.
Yes, sir, thank you. Information Report fourteen point one, we are bringing forth information regarding Heritage Spanish Four, which is an honors course that is also dual-credit. I'd like to give recognition to Kira Mokon. She is the Department Chair of World Languages at Bolingbrook High School. And she has been key in facilitating curriculum development in this new course proposal that you see before you. She has worked collaboratively with teachers at both schools, as well as building collaborative relationships outside of our district to ensure that we have the best offerings possible for our students. This course presents a very unique and important opportunity for our students. And I'd like to just give you a little bit of background about this. We currently offer three levels of Heritage Spanish for native Spanish speakers. Students can place into this Spanish class based on their existing abilities in Spanish. And we're recommending the offering of this fourth level, which is dual-credit, meaning that they can, through this partnership with the College of DuPage, earn college credit. We are really seeking to build up students by literacy, meaning that they are fully literate in both English and Spanish. And an added bonus, which is a very important point to make, is that the literacy skills in Spanish, of course, impact their literacy skills in English. So not only do they earn college credit free of charge, but they're building up a life skill that will serve them well in whatever field they choose to prepare. They also will have the opportunity to earn a seal of by literacy on their diploma. And students will have this extra opportunity for a double dose of literacy. So it's really a win-win. And there's full course details provided for you in this report. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have about this course.
I have a question. Our A.P. students have to pass a test to get credit for this, but these people do not have to pass anything to get credit?
Well, that is correct. With dual-language courses, because we meet the guidelines, including those of the instructor, they must be classified as an adjunct, approved, basically, and they must hold a master's in the content area. We currently offer other dual-credit courses, so this is just another addition to that. Being that it's a partnership with the Junior College, they do earn the credit. Now, these students will also have the opportunity, and they will also be prepared to take an A.P. language exam as well. So currently, Kira, you can tell me how many students took the A.P. Spanish language exam this year? It was the most ever. Close to ninety between both high schools. In the past, we've had perhaps maybe eight a year. And so, it's really kind of a dual preparation, but the dual-credit is guaranteed. The A.P. credit, they have to take a test, earn a certain score, and then the college, certain colleges may or may not honor that. So in this case, it is very advantageous to have this dual-credit offering.
But that dual-credit's only at College of DuPage?
This part, we have many partnerships with Joliet Junior College. In this case, however, it's unique in that Joliet Junior College was unable to offer us this offering. We did not stop there, we wanted to offer this for our students. So Kira sought out a partnership with the College of DuPage. And so, since Joliet Junior College was unable to partner with us on this, we were given special permission to partner with College of DuPage. And so, their instructors work with our teacher in the district who will teach this course. And we're working on getting student interest enrollment in this course as well.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Board Policy, first reading?
Yes, Information Report fourteen point two, we are presenting one policy for first reading on English learners, it's Policy six one sixty. It has been updated in accordance with legal guidance and the Board Policy subscription service.
Technology Initiatives?
Over the past three years, Valley View has experienced unprecedented change in the technology infrastructure and the number and types of devices supported. This change has been required to meet the growing integration of instructional technology into our newly adopted curriculum and assessment applications throughout all grade levels. Broad changes from outside influences have also necessitated growth and evolution to the technology offerings provided by each department. Tonight, we'd like to present several members of our Technology Department to present to you a technology initiative framework for the next school year, FY fifteen? Fifteen? Where did fourteen go? And so, with that, I'm gonna turn over to Astrid Welch, Director of Technology.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Grisoffe. I'm Dr. Mitchell, Vice President Gouges, distinguished members of the board, Senior Administration, Valley View Community. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce and provide you an update to the technology initiatives we'd like to propose for the coming school year, together with my colleagues, Dontofano, Director of Technology, Alberto Diaz, the Network and Operations Manager for the department, and Catherine Newman, who's our Instructional Technology Specialist. The Technology Department has had a number of changes that have been driven by some key catalysts that the district as a whole is responding to. And that would include the preparing for the Common Core State Standards, which is a mandated program, and the P.A.C. assessment, which we'll get into some more detail, which is also mandated. We've also seen a huge growth in non-district devices, so personal devices from staff and students utilizing the new wireless infrastructure. We are also working towards phasing out end-of-life devices and moving our operating system from Windows XP that has served us very well, and moving towards Windows Seven and a new offering that we would be proposing in this presentation. We've also been working with various members within the community and supporting our district leaders in responding to crisis response planning and implementation. And we are very well aware of the financial situation that the district is facing and the potential changes to the E-rate funding. I'd like to talk a little bit more about that E-rate funding because that has a direct impact on the cost of some of the key initiatives that the Technology Department utilizes to support the district. So the E-rate funding is a federally funded program that provides rebates and reduced costs to key technology items. And for us here at Valley View School District, that provides us a discount on our internet access, our legacy phone systems, cell phones provided by the district, web hosting, and a more modern phone system, voice-over I.P. Our E-rate consultant has alerted us to the fact that there could be some changes occurring to this E-rate funding. And the federal government may be providing us some rebates and reduced costs on networking equipment to support the wireless infrastructure, backend infrastructure, networking equipment. And they could potentially stop funding or providing us a discount on our legacy phone system. Now, these are only rumored changes, but they could have a large effect on some of our proposals. And as a result, we have reviewed the proposals and ensured that they are at the minimum needs until the E-rate funding situation is clarified. So we're not proposing here anything that we don't feel would be necessary, and we'll wait for some more clarification, which should be forthcoming either this summer or by October of this year. So with that in mind, what are we gonna talk to you about this evening? We'd like to talk about devices and infrastructure needed to support the mandated P.A.C. assessment, which, as you know, is our Valley View, which is a state mandated assessment that our students, grades three through eleven, will be taking next year in March, Valley View School District students, along with all the students in the state of Illinois. We'd also be proposing some information, some instructional and professional development upgrades to support curricular initiatives, which are used to implement Common Core State Standards, and some crisis response initiatives. And we're also proposing a replacement of our legacy phone system to provide a lower-cost solution with increased functionality. As you know, we've been doing a large amount of work for getting ready for this assessment, which is our mile marker to see and our accountability for the Common Core State Standards. And this evening, I'm just gonna talk to you about those technology needs, which we have been working with various groups within the district. So, as I mentioned, this is a state mandate. It is a computer-based assessment, which is in greater in length and complexity than any other computer-based assessment that our students have ever taken. Utilizing existing devices for students to take the assessment would impact curricular delivery. Our students would utilize the devices that we're proposing for curricular needs for the other hundred and thirty-five days that they would not be used for P.A.C. And I think the key point we want to make is the P.A.C. assessment shouldn't be an assessment of our students' ability to use technology, but an assessment of their performance and content knowledge. We are proposing the use of the Chromebook to deliver the P.A.C. assessment. It's fully compliant. It is a device that has a lower cost than a traditional laptop. It has a long battery life, six to eight hours, which would enable us to not have to have power at a testing device. It's very light and portable. And we can utilize that tool for other curricular assessment usage. We'll be talking about that a bit later. And those assessments will begin next March. So what are we asking you to consider this evening? We're asking for the following items. And this plan was developed by a paper and pencil exercise, or an Excel spreadsheet exercise, that we contacted to do an in-depth analysis of each building's technology needs. And then, we met one-on-one to discuss with the principal and their designee in the buildings, what does that really translate to when you're actually in the building and needing to deliver this assessment? So this was a collaboration with the Data and Assessment Department, and every building principal and their designees to come up with the plan. So we're outlining some needs here, some Chromebook devices, and some desktop computers, carts, and access points to deliver the wireless infrastructure and support those devices, and some servers to deliver the assessment at each building. Now, I'm gonna pass it over to my colleague, Alberto Diaz, our Network and Operations Manager, to discuss technology support for curricular initiatives.
Good evening, school board members, senior leadership, and Valley View community. In addition to the P.A.C. needs that we are working with, we also have identified some needs in the growth of curriculum and the delivery of it. Over the past year, we have seen a vast increase in devices connecting to our networks. And many of those, despite the fact that they're not district devices, they are being utilized to deliver the curriculum. Fifty-seven hundred devices. Our estimate is that most of those are students that are utilizing smartphones and iPads and other devices to see-- and iPads and other devices to, to, to see curriculum that staff members are delivering. In addition to that, um, the total number of district devices that we're currently supporting is ninety-four hundred. That has duplicated in the past twelve months or so. So we are very well aware of the needs. And on top of that, we are also trying to prepare our network for supporting Google Apps for Education, which is another system that will allow the teachers to engage more directly and, and, and deliver curriculum digitally. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. So, uh, the key initiatives that we are asking you to, to support this, this growth is purchasing installation of wireless access points for these devices and also additional Chromebooks that we, we are seeing being implemented in other areas. Algebra, curriculum in the high schools, special education for park accommodations, and career and technology education. At this particular time, due to the unknowns with E-Rate, we are not asking you to, uh, to look into providing a wall-to-wall implementation. We are going to wait for that until we know more about the E-Rate. And with that, I'll, I'll let Catherine Newman from Instructional Technology to talk more about the Google App for Education.
Good evening. I'm going to talk about the Google Apps for Education part of our initiative. The first part talks about Chromebooks. And we've seen that with Chromebooks and Google Apps for Education together, we can move the curriculum outside of the four walls of a classroom to support twenty-first century skills, communication, collaboration, critical thinking and creativity of both the students and the staff, allowing the staff to talk to each other, to write on the same document simultaneously, and for the students to do the same. Um, in addition, we are hoping to move forward with Google Apps for Education, including Google Drive, which is a free alternative to Microsoft Office, including docs, sheets and slides. Blogger, so students and staff, if they choose, can make a blog on a Valley View domain. Google Sites. And the addition of YouTube for YouTube channels, et cetera, in support of Common Core ELA standards. Additionally, we are hoping to implement G Scholar, which is a teacher dashboard, which allows the staff to see into each student's Google Drive from one panel. In addition, they could see into their blogs or into their sites all from one panel instead of clicking individual links or going to the K-Drive into a student's folder, hoping that they named the file the right thing, and then opening it up in order to grade their assessments, saving time, energy, increasing productivity, an innumerable amount of cost-saving things for the teacher and for the students. As a demonstration of how this connects to the Common Core, we made this video for you using Google Story Builder.
That's it?
Thank you. Thank you. So that again was Google Story Builder, which is a free add-on for the Google platform, available to all students and staff and members of the Board of Education, if you would like it, to make free videos, just like the one that we showed, we just showed you. Um, some of the key benefits to Google Drive, Apps for Education, G Scholar, the whole package. Um, it's anytime, anywhere, from any device. It's a free platform. You can download it as an app, access it via website, and easy access with a VVSD login. Um, and when you change your password, your password for Google changes with it. So you don't have to remember anyone. Uh, teacher management, again, the teacher dashboard through G Scholar, saving time, increasing productivity. Um, and then from the IT standpoint, especially with the Chromebooks themselves, you turn the Chromebook off, turn it back on, eight seconds later, it's updated. So for me, that's very awesome. Um, and then the free product line, they keep adding and removing. Um, as trends in education are growing, they grow with it. Over the past year, we've been piloting a special education for park accommodations and proficiency development. Again, productivity skills for the students and their teachers, career in tech ed. So the applied technology classes at the middle schools, RHS Social Studies, the AP, US History and AP Economics courses. BJ Ward kindergarten and general bilingual classes, Woodview first grade, general and special education courses. So everything from kindergarten, so the itty-bitties, all the way up to AP Economics. We tried it all and saw how it fit. Some things we changed and modified along the way. But in general, you'll see in just a moment that the staff and students were very happy. Some of the comments. Katie Thomas, who's a library media specialist at BJ Ward, involved in one of our pilots. She's also a technology coach, said, "Google Apps has revolutionized the way I instruct, assess and collaborate this year. Every day, I'm finding new uses." Phil Weisick, who's a career and technical education teacher at Romeoville High School, said, "Students in my graphic design, graphic and web design class have started to create Google Sites that will act as their online portfolio." So no more printing of things in a web design course to be graded by their teacher. Jessica Spallow, who is an ESL Language Arts teacher at Brooks Middle School, said, "Google is a hub for all users. Being web-based makes it accessible to the needs of our diverse VSD learners."
Somebody who didn't want to say their name. "My students love using Google Drive to collaborate on a group project that include, included slide presentation and a paper. They appreciated how quickly and conveniently they could work together using the drive." Nancy Ending from Woodview. "The Chromebooks are an inexpensive but effective technology resource that can be easily embedded into the classroom curriculum." And we are well aware that we are using Microsoft products, Office, Word, Excel, just to name a few. And some information will be forthcoming as we explore Google Drive and we see how is it going to fit within the curriculum and where are we going to go with Microsoft. So the next steps to meet students where they are, integrate PARK Chromebooks as additional technology resources to support Common Core standards. And obviously, add wireless coverage to support more devices and, and, as we transition to, to Google Apps for Education and G Scholar. The cost that we're asking you to look into as we look in the next phase is a small wireless upgrade that will get us through eighteen months professional development for Google Apps and a backup solution so that we can make sure that the data that is on the Google Drive, we can also backup locally. With that, I'll let Don Tofano talk about voice-over IP.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about the voice-over IP solution. One second, there we go. Uh, and voice-over IP is Voice Over Internet Protocol. And essentially, that's a phone system that will run off of, uh, use our network connectivity to connect phones within the district and the internet to connect, uh, calls outside the district. So we have our, our legacy phone system currently, which is an older phone system. Uh, and, and obviously, we're considering, uh, bringing here for consideration the hosted voice-over IP solution. Uh, why do we need to replace the existing legacy phone system? Uh, our, our phone systems are at least ten years old. We have a variety of phone systems at different facilities, but the newest ones are ten-plus years, uh, years old currently. Um, they provide a very limited amount of functionality. They do provide dial tone, and we can obviously call other, uh, other schools within the district and outside the district. Um, but we are, in, in many ways, paying a premium cost for a limited level of functionality and support. But that is offset currently by the fact that we receive E-Rate discounts on our telephone services. Uh, our E-Rate discount this current year was about seventy-seven percent. And next year, it's projected to be at seventy-nine percent. Uh, those discounts are based on our free and reduced enrollment numbers. And so districts that have, have, uh, larger numbers of free and reduced lunch receive a greater discount on telecommunications services. Uh, what is a hosted voice-over IP solution? It's a phone system that is supported over the network. In, in the hosted realm, that means it's not premise-based, it's not onsite. Uh, the actual, uh, the majority of the phone services are actually hosted on an external site. It does allow for centralized voicemail, so one centralized location for all voicemail and administration of the actual phone system itself. It also, uh, one of the strong features is unified messaging, which allows voicemails to actually be connected with email services so that when a voicemail comes into, to a user that has a voicemail box, they receive it in their inbox, in their email. Uh, and again, that, that maintenance and all support is off-site. Just some of the benefits of a hosted VoIP solution. Lower total cost of ownership. And we'll, we'll, we'll show some slides that just are projecting some potential savings long-term. It is an E-Rate eligible service. Also, from, from a continuity and disaster recovery standpoint, since it's not a premise-based system, if something were to happen to any facility that would normally have housed a phone system, that system would likely be down. Whereas this is a system that is hosted, off-site. Uh, and so it eliminates that, that worry over that. I pointed out the unified communications and integration in email. Um, it also easily scales up and down if we need to add or remove users. Uh, it, it eliminates the, the need to have upgrades because it's actually maintained by the provider that's hosting it. So we don't have to worry about purchasing new servers. All of that is included within the, uh, the service aspect of the, uh, of the product. It also supports a variety of endpoints, which means you can have your traditional handsets. You can also have soft phones, which is a software-based phone that can run off of a PC. It can also integrate, uh, individuals' personal cell phones. So you could actually be transferring calls from your, uh, your desk, your desktop phone to a, a mobile phone on the fly. And again, the, the support aspects of it. Now, the, uh, the, the process of, uh, of actually selecting a, a provider for a hosted solution, it, it does fall under the, the realm of E-Rate. Uh, which, if you're, you're not familiar with the E-Rate process, every, every fall, we must submit requests for proposals on any new or expiring E-Rate contracts, E-Rate eligible contracts. And that includes all of our internet connectivity, web hosting, uh, all of our, uh, mobile cell phones and, and our existing phone services. In, in the, in this instance, we put out an RFP detailing what our needs were, our requests were of a system, and we received five proposals back, of which two were, were very close in terms of, of pricing. Uh, and based on those two, we narrowed it down to, to one selection. So the pricing information that you see is based on a ShoreTel hosted solution provided by Call One. What we have here is just a slide indicating what our existing telecom services would look like over a, a ten-year period with certain assumptions. Assumptions being that there's no E-Rate, no changes in the E-Rate funding rules, that we had consistent usage, and that we also continue to have availability of support on those legacy phone systems. Uh, as, uh, as time has gone on, about two years ago, we actually had to, to change support providers because the, um, uh, some of the service providers that were giving us support initially no longer would support those legacy systems. We were, we were able to find a sole provider to provide support on all of our phone systems. Uh, but with this, you could see that our, our average phone bill after all our phone services for, for usage and, and support, after E-Rate discounts averages about sixty-four thousand dollars per year. Uh, and with, with a ten-year total cost of about six-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. With the proposed hosted voice-over IP solution, and the assumptions with this is that there are no changes in E-Rate funding and that we have, again, consistent usage, what we're looking at is about a six-and-a-half-year return on the investment. So in the initial five years, we're actually, uh, because we would have to purchase new handsets to, to support the new system. Uh, the, the first five years are comprised of leased handsets and then our usage and support. And then just after that, we're paying for support. Over the, the course of ten years, we would see about a seventy-one thousand dollar cost avoidance with this, with the system that we're recommending. With the existing telecom services, this indicates, again, some assumptions. This is with the rumored E-Rate changes in the E-Rate funding. Uh, with those rules changes, legacy phone systems like we have and the lines that support them would no longer be covered. Again, it's, it, the assumption is that there's consistent usage and there's a continued availability of support on those legacy phone systems. Next year, we're fine. E-Rate is covering the, uh, the legacy systems for at least one more year. And, and as was indicated earlier, we should know more this fall as far as what is going to be covered for next year. Uh, if they do make those changes that are rumored, uh, what we would look at is about, uh, it would take about two-and-a-half years to recoup the savings on, on moving to a hosted VoIP system. Uh, again, projecting out ten years, and I would think that if they did make the change, we'd move more quickly than, than ten years. But over ten years, uh, you're looking at an estimated total cost with the, the rumor changes at being one point five, roughly one point five million in telecom costs and a cost avoidance of, uh, over, over nine-hundred thousand dollars. So associated costs with the legacy system versus, uh, hosted VoIP. With existing E-Rate rules, our, our current legacy system is, uh, ten-year service and maintenance costs of about six-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, with hosted VoIP, the ten-year service and maintenance costs would be five-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars. Again, that is, that is projected based on, uh, use, usage, and then also on the, the current E-Rate discounts, with an average annual cost of fifty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. In the hosted VoIP environment, uh, we'd be looking at, uh, again, the total cost of five-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand and a, uh, two-and-a-half-year return on that investment. thousand and a two-and-a-half-year return on that investment, estimated total cost in cost avoidance of over nine-hundred thousand. The hosted VoIP solution costs, we would have infrastructure and one-time replacement equipment costs totaling two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. Why move to a hosted VoIP solution? Break even in either two-and-a-half or six-and-a-half years? Get those added benefits of additional features and functionality, lower cost of ownership, and it's a hosted solution with on-prem, on-premise failover, which means in the event even we lost level of connectivity to the internet, it would still fail over to, to local phone And Esther Wells is going to give the financial summary.
So this is a direct quote from Assistant Superintendent Grazoffi. He said, "This sounds great, but can we afford it? Our goal was to remain budget neutral and ensure that the technology spend each year didn't increase any. We have a lease that is finalized this year, and that amount was in excess of three-hundred thousand dollars, and we used that lease at the time to buy laptops. Those laptops cost around a thousand dollars. The devices that we're proposing to purchase now are around three-hundred. And the balance of the funding would then go towards those infrastructure costs that we identified. So with the changes that we would be proposing and bringing for action next time would be falling into our annual technology lease with no foreseeable increase. What does that look like? These are the costs broken down by the initiatives we discussed this evening, with a total amount for hardware, software, and installation for Park of a little over four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The current curriculum initiative supports, that's the Google piece, and the additional wireless connectivity, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars. And the hosted VoIP solution would be two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. That's nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, which over a five-year lease would be two-hundred thousand dollars a year. Could I take any questions?
I assume that the Chromebook is user-friendly for the students?
Yes, it certainly is. It boots up within seven seconds, and it's immediately available for students to use with instruction.
Okay. But with user-friendly, I don't care how, well, I do care how fast it boots up, but the students have no trouble figuring out?
No, it's all a web-based programs. So it launches the Chrome browser, and from that, students can access online resources for instruction. We've done some backend details in order to ensure that the infrastructure is suitable for students, and that means that they will be able to log in with their current district username and ID and password, so there's no additional username and password to have to memorize at all.
And we know it's compatible with the Park?
We do. We waited until January until they fully gave the green light to be utilized for the Park assessment, and that's one of the beauties of the program, in that we can lock it down and be fully Park compliant.
In the meeting that we had, I think one of the things that were discussed that was pertinent was the fact that with the Park coming and the preparatory work that is needed with the webbase. And we just kind of had discussed the problem, if we don't do this, could you just kind of explain what would happen if something like this doesn't move forward with the Park assessment?
Thank you. Secretary Hanson, yes. We would then be needing to utilize devices that are currently in place for, used to lies for curriculum-based. So the labs in the high schools that are currently used to deliver curriculum, they would then, for those forty days that the Park assessment take place, be out of commission for curriculum, would need to be used to deliver the assessment. The assessment is a mandate. It's something that Valley View and every other school district in the state of Illinois is needing to institute, and so we would not be able to move forward with that, in that, the manner we would like. It would also, the purchase of the Chromebooks would also allow us, students to use those for curriculum needs and learn those Twenty-First Century School skills and practice Park assessment questions prior to them actually taking the assessment. If we don't do that, then it's going to be an assessment not only of their content knowledge and what they should know, but also an assessment of their technology skills, and that is not something that we're wanting to do. We want to make sure that our students are ready to take that assessment, and it's a, an assessment of their content knowledge and what they do know, rather than their use of the technology tool.
The one-time purchase of equipment? How long? What's the life of that equipment?
For the Park assessment?
For the VoIP?
For the VoIP. We anticipate that being ten-plus years. Our oldest phone system is, our youngest phone system, I should say, is at least ten years old in Bolingbrook High School that was implemented then. Every other system that we have in the district is well in excess of that, so at least a ten-year system.
Over a year ago, we went to a technology thing in District 214, a north suburb, suburban district, that hosted school districts from around the country to see some of the items. I see touches of that. How, how close are we to having students and teachers take advantage of technology in the way that we saw them taken advantage of, to the point where they got their textbooks online, the shared drive, the devices in every student's hand? You know, where does this bring us in terms of that?
Thank you, Vice President Gudis. While the pieces that we would ask for action to implement the Google platform would give us that platform in order to do that. Students will be able to access their drives anywhere, anytime, from their smartphone at any given time using their Valley View credentials. And at the same time, it would be in a Valley View safe environment with all the oversight that we are currently having. We're ensuring that we have the ability to do that with the G Scholar piece. And then the wireless upgrades that we're proposing would enable us to support the devices. I would have mentioned that it's not wall-to-wall coverage, so it wouldn't mean that every single device that every student has would get a connection. That's something that when we get clarity on the E-Rate funding, we would like to come back and propose. But those fifty-seven-hundred personal devices that are currently being utilized by students and staff would then be able to use the software platform, and students can participate anywhere, It brings us one step closer to that reality, and we are definitely wanting to move towards a formalized, bring-your-own-technology program. We, we have it in an informal manner right now, and we know that teachers and students are using those devices for instruction.
Thank you.
I just want to say, sitting in that meeting, you guys had done a fabulous job of really researching, and so I commend you for all the angles that you're trying to hit.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. It's certainly been a team effort. We've got thirteen members of our department that have been working on this Google program as an extracurricular piece on top of everything else they've been doing, so we're fortunate to have them on the team. Thank you for your time.
Our objective tonight really is to get this in front of you. Obviously, it's been on our radar since last November. I think we had a technology meeting then, we had one month and a half ago, and so this is the culmination of a lot of that work. And so, again, get it before you this evening, answer any questions, comments, concerns you have, and in two weeks' time, we'll bring forward a recommendation, consolidated recommendation very close to what you see up here this evening, so.
Thank you.
Mechanical infrastructure project at Brooks Middle School. The second information report this evening is a, a revisit of a, a mechanical infrastructure project at Brooks Middle School that we brought to you, I believe, also back in November of 2013. The, the estimate at the time was close to six, between six and seven million dollars, and we felt that that was a project that, while sorely needed, was, was obviously a high price point for us to, to swallow. We wanted to follow through, just make sure that the estimate that we were given from our preliminary engineer was, was solid. And at the time, we presented an information report, letting you know that we were going to be looking to partner with an ESCO, energy service company, that would, that would see this project through from start to finish, provide a performance guarantee, if you will, that the work would be done, and that there would be savings attributed to the efficiencies that would come from the, the upgrades to the mechanical system. A lot of the mechanicals are original to the building, nineteen-seventy-four, so they're forty years old this year. And I can tell you that when I first came here, this was, this was something that was on my radar then, nine years ago. Brooks always was a project that was supposed to happen as we circled back. We obviously built, built Bolingbrook High, did a lot of improvements at, at Romeival High, did a lot of mechanical improvements at Romeival High, built the new K-8 campus, and just about every middle school and elementary school has had mechanical upgrades over the last nine years that I've been here. Brooks is one that has not received any mechanical attention, other than a fan wall that was put in, I think, four years ago. And so, again, the need is there. We did partner, or we did put out on the street, if you will, an RFP for, for this, these ESCO services, and we're happy to report that we received two bids back. I think we had six companies that attended our pre, our mandatory pre-bid. Two companies had responded, and both of those companies submitted bids under four million dollars. So again, much, much more palpable, if you will. But obviously, in our financial situation, how can we afford it with our current financial, within our current financial constraints? We had a finance meeting about a month ago, and looked at the scope of work that was contained within this project, as well as all the other projects that fall under our capital improvements for the next five years. And the decision at that time was to break apart this work, to phase it in over a five-year period, so that we could comfortably do the work, but not lock out any of our other buildings that need parking lot attention or roof replacements, things of that nature. And so I think the first order of business for Brooks was the replacement of the oldest chiller in the building, and then circle back next year for the, for the boiler replacement. And so, again, we, we just wanted to revisit this with you, see if you have any questions or, or concerns. We are putting the finalized assessment, if you will, on the ESCO proposals. Feel that we've got a good response, and I've spent a lot of time with both of those entities to make sure that they understand the scope of work, we understand that they understand what we're asking, and want to make a, a good recommendation to, to proceed with this work over the next five years.
Thank you. Any questions? Legal Services report.
No report.
Association and Federation report to AFT. Valley View Council. Valley View Office Personnel Council?
No report.
Any old business? Is there any new business? Questions from the public?
Hi, I'm Colleen Doughty. I live in Bolingbrook. I have a couple of questions regarding the statement of bills. So I think Mr. Grazoffi would be a good person. There was one line item that was a payment from Harris Trust and Savings Bank. The description was procurement card charges. That's their monthly, what, just, what is that?
That would be the consolidated bill for all of the P-cards or procurement cards that we, we use for small purchases throughout the district for those personnel that have been cleared to use procurement cards. It's in place of issuing paper purchase orders.
So who, what level of staff has, has issued those cards?
We've got anyone from building clerical staff, all the way up to the superintendent.
And what is the approval process for that, for those cards, as far as their expenditures? Do they turn in an expense report, or?
Absolutely. All receipts must be, they're, they're come through monthly. It's a very arduous process. We go after staff if taxes is incurred. Obviously, if, if we feel the purchase is inappropriate, which is very infrequent, I will say, but once in a while, you have to question somebody as to what the purchase is for. We don't allow purchase of electronic items unless that's pre-approved. We just feel that that, that is certainly an area that could be abused, and so that's something that we have, we have shied away from. A lot of times, it's used for professional development, travel, things of that nature.
Is there anything else that they're not allowed to purchase besides electronics that you can think of?
Certainly liquor. They could purchase liquor. Yeah, I mean, the restrictions are, are not too broad. Nothing to come, really comes to mind, other than those two.
So the board then doesn't see the individual charges, they're just approving the total?
Correct.
So in this, this month, it would be two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand roughly? So my question is to the board, do you guys ever question what those individual charges might add up to be? I know that they're, they're split out by fund, so like if it's for education, or whatever else the fund descriptions are. I mean, that's a lot of money, and over a twelve-month period, it could be one-point-eight million dollars that you're not seeing the detail for.
Yes.
So, Mr. Gudis, you have?
I have questioned multiple items on the summary of bills, oftentimes learning more information than I care to know about what all they are. But also, at some point, we have very stringent policies that our treasurer follows. The board members are aware of it, and, you know, we don't have the opportunity, I'm, I'm looking here, and I forgot how many items are on this month's. I'm scrolling down here. There's over two-hundred. There's over two-hundred items on there, so obviously, we're not going to be able to look at the receipts for each one.
Right.
However, board members, when, when they have questions, they do get those questions answered, and, but what I can speak to is that we have very firm policies in place from, and it looked at by our treasurer, Ms. Joanne Borg, with a great level of scrutiny and detail on what's approved and not approved. So you're correct. I, I don't request individual, I've never requested an individual expense report. I have requested clarification of what was spent in those items, very much like the question you asked today.
Thank you.
I think, Members Sora.
Some of the things I know that the P-card is used for is individual buildings, if I'm not okay, for teachers who have to have consumables, you know, like they're teaching cooking, and they have to have beef or something.
Right.
That type of thing is put on a P-card, so a lot of that, some of those have those also.
And, and also for supplies of that nature, and also professional development, there's a tiered approval process, and it has to be documented. So there'll be a building layer of approval, and then it will come to the district level. The same thing if a director wants to purchase professional development books. They give it to their immediate supervisor for approval, they make sure it's an appropriate purchase, and then it would come to my office, and then it would be approved there, and then I, then it goes to finance. So there's a tiered process.
That makes sense. Thank you. The next account I wanted to ask about was the, the required mileage that it looks like administrators and various other employees are paid. And I'm not sure if it's annually or twice a year, but it's like seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The description is required travel or required mileage. What is, what is that exactly?
That's mileage for reimbursement. A staff member might incur traveling inter-district, out-of-district, professional development. They have to provide substantiation for their travels, and they are added to their W-2 at the end of the year, so that they are taxed for any differential between what's reimbursed and what, what they provide in terms of backup.
So it's not, it is not just a flat rate? You're in a certain position, we expect you to travel? It just looks odd, because many of the reimbursements are the exact same amount?
I, I can speak for educational services. Many of the contract, contracts for administrative positions do come with that flat rate. However, you have to have documentation. I'd say the majority of directors, for example, travel far more than that, and so that's kind of the cap. It does not go above that. They can't submit additional. If you travel less, fewer miles than that, then that is, you know, what you are, it's claimed as income, essentially.
Right.
So they do complete a report that is submitted to finance as well. And I know that the auditing process on that has even increased greatly, to the point where we have to have documentation in the form of, like, our calendar that substant... to have documentation in the form of, like, our calendar that substantiates that, as well as the mileage that, you know, shows for those two locations.
Okay. Thank you. And then, lastly, there was a payment for the treasurer's revolving fund, and that looks like a monthly thing. I didn't know what that was.
It's like a, what's the best term for it? We write checks monthly, and then we reimburse that fund, so that it's, it's whole each month. And so, I'm, Joanne, do you know what the balance is every month?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, so.
So what kind of expenditures go through that?
Hey, Joanne, can you come up? Ms. Bur, can you come up to the mic? Can you introduce yourself to?
My name is Joanne Borg, and I'm the treasurer for the school district. It's basically an impressed fund, and majority of the money is used to reimburse parents for refunds of student fees or one-time, usually one-time refunds.
Thank you.
And I said that was one last question, but I'm sorry, I have one more. The technology presentation, they made a reference to students accessing the wireless. Are students given, like, a passcode to access wireless? I, I only ask because I have completely, I mean, threatened to take my children's phones away if they brought them to school, because I believed that that was school policy, and I just need to know if I should stop yelling at them for that.
If they're using their devices for instructional purposes, it is allowed. It's just not a, a universal, anything goes.
Okay.
So in many cases, you will see students using devices in the classroom.
Are they, I mean, are they given a password, or is it just not password-protected?
It is password-protected. It's an open wireless system. However, there is a password that's associated with it.
All right. Thank you.
Any announcements from the board?
Excuse me, I have a comment. Is that, do you close it at all now?
To the mic, sir.
Last time, there was a comment made regarding a teacher who had been slated for non-renewal, and the statement was that that particular teacher would have to make a written request to come back into District 365-U to work. The problem is, the inference here that you portray to people is that this is some type of derelict teacher, there's a problem with delivery of educational services, or the individual wasn't competent. In this particular case, there was no such prima facie case of any wrongdoing whatsoever. Consequently, if you're going to have a system like this, where you characterize people as being nefarious on some level, it needs to be revisited. You have continually spoken about accountability, but it seems that the accountability is a one-way street. It's one way for members of the Caucasian persuasion, while members of pronounced pigmentation seem to be held disproportionately accountable. In the case that I'm speaking about, it seems that there was, the administrator in charge had made some malfeasance, acts of malfeasance and negligence in the evaluation. When I look at some of the things regarding the hiring practices, there seems to be disproportionate numerical differences in the hiring practices. And that accountability, I don't see anyone in HR here accountable for the recruitment and retention of minorities. I don't see the administrator being held accountable. Oh, that's right, they were Caucasian. Perhaps at some point, we could equalize the treatment of people and not characterize them in such a negative vein, which is tantamount to revictimizing the person that has already been victimized. We don't do that in any other segment of society. Why is 365-U doing it to teachers here?
Sir, the board can't comment on personnel matters. You're mentioning about somebody who was commented about having been non-renewed, and I think if you go back and, and look at the tape, there were not comments about, of nefarious manner in the way you described.
The inference, I, I prefaced the statement with the inference. If you go back and look at the tape, the individual made the statement that they had to go back and petition for the right. You are inferring that they did something to necessitate the action. I would appreciate if you would show me what they did, in the absence of anything.
And as I started out my comments, we can't talk about specific personnel matters, and so the board is in a, at a significant disadvantage when somebody comes up to the podium and speaks to that, but they cannot respond.
It's funny. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. There is, by operation of law, requirements of non-renewal and certain, certain steps that are taken. I'm not commenting on, on the person that you're speaking of. I don't know the person you're speaking of, so I'm not referring to that person at all. However, we can't comment on that, and I believe that if you look at the tape, there wasn't a comment. And you might feel that somebody being asked to petition for their job, or to, to request a job, has some negative inferences, but that, that does not. That's just an operation of law. If somebody's been dismissed.
I don't dispute, I don't dispute what you're saying, but if you look at it from the totality of the situation, as a minority, and watching some of the things that have happened, just because it's the law doesn't make it right. I can think of numerous instances. When I was here last time, I went home and had to listen to Billie Holiday's record. It's called Strange Fruit.
Familiar with it?
Strange Fruit, are you familiar with it? And what it depicts? Those things were against the law. Okay? And they said you could do those things to a group of people. It doesn't necessarily make it right. Doing what's right isn't always popular, and doing what's popular isn't always right. So I don't know how you want to characterize it, but that's the way I have to look at it, because that's what I've seen.
And we appreciate your opinion.
And thank you for giving me the opportunity to say it.
Are there any announcements by the board? I have one. I want to thank Ms. Pam Pritchard and Dorlethe Peyton for all their work, not just this year, but for the many years on AXO. I know they've done, for years, they've done great work with AXO and with our kids with AXO. I also want to say congratulations to all of our middle school students that were inducted into the National Junior Honors Society in the past week or so. Congratulations to all, to all those students. I've gotten to see the names in the paper, and it's just great to see that many kids being inducted into the National Junior Honors Society. Is there any announcements by the administration?
I would just like to thank the Valley View Enrichment Foundation, Mike Lawler, and all of the other members. Tonight, the board authorized the acceptance of grants that will soon be made known to some of those grant applicants, and they've been providing resources for our teachers for quite some time now. We are very appreciative of this support, so thank you very much.
Is there any announcements by the public?
I, I do have one initial report. Come on up, Diane. The district recently completed a compliance audit with representatives from the Regional Office of Education. We had two assistant superintendents who were with us for two days, and the, the exit interview with the representatives was very complimentary to the district and the staff. They, they basically said that that's, this is the best audit they've ever undertaken. They had scheduled four days to conduct the audit. They were done in two. They found one area of non-compliance. They, they find this area of non-compliance in 95% of the elementary districts that they audit, and that's in the area of PE requirements for, five days a week. I know Dr. Mitchum has shared that with you via email, but I wanted to share that with, with the members of our public. And so, that is an unfunded mandate. The legislature, I think, took that up a couple of years back. It would require us to add about 20 additional teachers at, at minimum, by our guess, and so it's something that we will look to, obviously, bring ourselves into compliance with, but there is a cost associated with doing that. But overall, I think the takeaway for us was that, and certainly for you, the board, is that we are fully compliant with all of the rules and regs that, that the State Board and the legislature has promulgated and put, put forth. So, again, it's a, a good report, a happy report, so.
Well, Dr. Mitchum, thank you, to you on that, and all your staff that are involved in that. Appreciate that. Ms. Farrell?
Good evening, school board members, senior leadership in the Valley View community. I would just like to let everyone know that on June 4th, at Bolingbrook High School, at 7:00 PM, we are going to have the debut of, or the, a reveal of our new sound shell, the debut of the new high school alma mater, and it's just, there's going to be followed by a reception. Our wind symphony band will perform a piece, our sunrise singers will perform a piece, and then the combined groups will do the new alma mater. So we're hoping to have a big crowd there after that, the little program. There will be a ceremony back in the atrium of the school, and we're hoping that everyone can come and see the fruits of our efforts. It's been a long process, but it's been very quick. And I would just like to take a moment to thank the people who have been on our committee. Everyone has worked extremely diligently in their different areas to make this come to fruition. Amy Rupsis is the director of bands at the high school. Her and I were co-chairing it. Larry Fisher is the director of choirs. Rob Rose is an assistant principal at BHS. Steve Quigley, Gary Grazafi, Mike Lopez, Larry Rand, Michael Carpanzano, Ceni Swinkounas, Liz Guzzi, Joel Piggers, Eileen Viverina, Joe Petrick, and Penny Skok. So to all of those people, thank you very much. Like I said, we could not have done it without every single person and the part that they played. Thank you. Hope to see everyone there.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.